Yeah.
Getting caught up from last year.
Never.
That would be a true state.
The five million is to the body in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands qualification under God invisible with liberty and justice.
More than everybody. Call the meeting to order. Would you have a forum? I take the motion to approve the agenda. All right, discussion. Here now all favor I. Bye, both. Here he is for Rich.
What I've got for this morning is we talked about those six. Bridges Culver saying that we want to get designed as a lump sum package. So we've got a contract here from the VHS to. To do the preliminary design on those hydraulics. So it'll be survey hydraulics. Lowery. Design roughly runs about. Sixty four hundred dollars a bridge. So it's about thirty eight thousand five hundred dollars, including their expenses to come out here, which is probably pretty reasonable considering. I wouldn't be able to get to that many bridges in one time. We're looking at. Doing those designs or at least getting the preliminary stuff done. And then hopefully we do a local letting by. October, maybe earlier if we could. And we're all, we're assuming that we're going to be able to just probably put either regular culvert centers or box culverts depending on how the hydraulics go with these. Some of them might be where we wouldn't run much other than if we've got a house by some of those that are. You already got an existing box next to the Shell Rock or something. It's not going to take much, but. The other ones might take a little bit more as and we're assuming that we won't have to put any. Bridges back and then so. That's the assumptions right now. We'll find out when we get through the design or preliminary stuff. We're headed, but. Thank for the most part, we can assume they're going to be smaller shuckers, but. We get this through and we can get a whole, at least when the construction contract comes through, we know what we're. And we go through. So I'd recommend we approve the thirty five for those six bridges and then. In about a week or so, when I get back from vacation, we'll probably be getting one for three ninetieth there to get that one wrong. But that's going to take. Federal Bridge money or not the state bridge money or whatever we're using versus the local stuff.
Right, taking motion to approve the VHS contract for bridges. I'll make that motion also good. Any discussion? Hearing none or favor I? All right, I pose. Ready?
Well, I've got for other than I'll be gone. Friday through Friday. But. Much as I hate it, I'll have my phone or something really needs to be discussed, so.
For anything? The architects.
Not yet.
Yeah, actually Paris started working on that. I only uh letter as far as I go. Okay.
That's all I got for you. Dan, keep the deputies away from one oh five on my way to Michigan.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Go away.
All right, moving to drainage. Need to. Look at the reclassification annexation reports for drainage districts fourteen twenty six forty six forty eight thirty four Jacob.
Yep, we were recommending annexation into branch for forty six. There's a map, the areas that are. Passed for recommendization. For them, including Silver Lake. Uh for branches for fourteen Detroit South Town. Or recommending annexes and some properties that are kind of on the. Outer limits that are eggland benefits from the new facilities being constructed this fall. And then bring your twenty six range twenty six that are different within forty six just on the east side of the interstate. Uh there's just a few parcels that are up on the upper end that were recommended for. And then along with that. We're we reclassified fourteen. Twenty six. Forty six. Forty eight and thirty four. Um thirty four and. Fourteen will be the only two that we want assessed for this year. So we'll need to schedule a hearing. Which we tend to be already put for June twenty seven. And then the improvement today for both of those fourteen and thirty four. The other ones. We can wait to do afterwards because there is no expense except for. Reclass expense.
Yeah, with they may be doing them before harvest?
Yeah, I think we still do the hearings this summer. I have to give Val some time, so she's not trying to put out.
Yeah, fourteen and thirty four. I like to push those who can use those classic agent scheduled business.
And go get those done right away and then we can get into like August or something with the others and. Okay. Okay, so.
I will get those two this afternoon.
Yeah, so we need a motion to accept the reclassification and annexation reports for drainage district fourteen twenty six forty six forty eight thirty four.
Oh, my turn motion.
Yeah, there's a second. I'll second that. All right, any discussion on any of those? Hearing none, favorite I? Bye. opposed? Okay, so now we need to set public hearing dates. For the. Reclass fourteen and. Thirty four.
So. It works for you guys Tuesday, June twenty fifth. Nine AM. Fourteen annex. And then nine fifteen for the fourteen reclass. And then ten AM for the thirty four reclass. Cause I'll get published in the paper next Wednesday, twenty days after that will be done.
Let's add so.
We'll do it, so. Yeah, there's a motion set public candidates for June twenty fifth. Is there a second? Second, okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Lowberg, alright, maybe, alright, Stone. Okay, those public hearing dates have been set and posted. And we will. Maybe look into the others for next week or two. Okay. Anything else for us, Jacob?
Uh what do thirty four is progressing pretty well. Voices is out there. Um they have hit sand. We all kind of. Expect.
Got an idea.
But that's slowly now, but they're about half done with the. Projects so far.
Going good otherwise.
Yep, going good. Um we'll probably have a pay application. We'll file this. For your next one.
Well, yeah. And then there's the work now. Fourteen.
Uh fourteen, they will not start work on until after crop. We're going to get down with thirty four and then they've got some jobs for state for the box culverts. So we're going to wait till after.
Okay.
For fourteen.
Which let's get again. Yep, plus uh or no crap damages is better. Okay. Uh any else then? Again, alright, okay. Um I've got some work orders to look at. DD eighteen Maine, and that's the one with. Yeah. Um. Now when they've. Made a repair, found what's going on.
Yeah, mess. Paul can talk if he wants.
Yeah, well.
I talked to Paul last weekend, Ruggnus. Can't name one of the beaten dugout. It was pretty well. And he would like to go far there to get. Blowage and there's still a lot of water there, isn't there, Paul?
Yeah, Pete. But he he doesn't know, you know, if. If for some reason he'll run out of it. Where he where he started, he just kept digging back toward the outlet. And he got to where the water, it would take the water and then just. Keeps progressing west um up toward the blacktop and he just hasn't run out of roots yet and. He'll run into a little stretch where it's not bad, but then it. It gets bad again. Um he noticed that. The tile isn't in good shape and the further west he gets, the more gaps that get in the tile and that's where the roots are going in. So he said, you know. He doesn't know why it is that way, but that's that is the way it is, so.
Fairly shallow in there too, isn't it, Paul?
Yeah, it is pretty shallow. Yeah, he he said he would dig down. I don't know exactly how deep it is, but I I know he would dig just a little bit and he was like three feet above the tile and water would boil up. Through the dirt. He couldn't even get down to the tile.
It's loaded then.
Yeah, there's still water coming up above, isn't there? I I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still outside the waterway and and we still have water up on the top end. It did start to go a little bit yesterday, but. Um it's still full to the top of the intakes.
Well, hate to spend a bunch of money. Well, we gotta get into a project, but we kind of got to get it open too.
It's we kind of already okay. A little bit of repair, at least research there to get it going and it's there's probably. Half a mile or almost a mile of water on top of the ground yet. You're going to have to get that opened up before we can really even. I mean, sort of just going in there and start digging an open ditch all the way up. I mean, that's. For now, you got to get in there and at least get it dried out for the guys to. Plant, I mean.
Well, and that's what Jeremy was saying. It's it's hard for him to even work, you know, because he said. It, I mean, where he's at, he's able to keep working and getting it freed up. But I mean, you couldn't really do any. Project until we get rid of the water anyway.
Right, right. So I mean, is it possible to just? Make somewhat of a small open ditch?
That's kind of.
Let it flow.
Yeah, that's basic. That's basically what he's doing. He's just digging the tile out and making a little open ditch. Basically, yeah, that's about exactly what he's doing.
Yeah.
I've never done it, but I know it's been done where you've done it with an old tile and then you're going to repair it anyway. So you just crush the old one six months before. Right, that's there's kind of some gray area. They're still down the wall.
Right. So I guess if we can get it opened up. And just get get it flowing until we can get it there till it gets dried out and then in the meantime, we can have the. Engineers glance over the report that we got a few years ago.
I looked at the report.
Yeah, is there a way that um and I don't know the process, but I don't know at that time, I know we did talk about an open ditch, but that isn't what was in the plan. Is there a way that the engineer would look at that and say, well? Well, let's have an open ditch this far, you know, because we're going to have to go under two blacktops. And whether and the railroad, um whether an open ditch would even work? Or. Could we do it so far and then go to a tile or, you know? We're not necessarily opposed to an open ditch on ours either. We just need the drainage. It's it's just. Got. You know, put off too long.
Sure. Yeah, well, like I said, I guess we kind of already approved for you to get that thing open and flowing, so.
Okay.
Jeremy do what he needs to.
Yeah, do what it takes to try to get that thing drained because let's say we can't do a thing with the way it's gonna with a full, so. Um in the meantime, Jake, you know, Jacob is here with Boltman make. He's going to go back and look at that again and. Maybe we'll we'll have to just set up a landowners meeting here. Uh maybe. Next month. Hopefully, everybody's done with fieldwork by then to. Uh and get together and see what everybody's thoughts are.
It won't matter, but um.
Yeah.
I don't think it's ever going to end this year.
No. Yeah, we asked for range too long. Now we're getting it, so.
Yeah, for sure.
But I think what we'll try to do that. I know um July we're getting. Uh kind of busy when we've got some vacations and stuff coming up. So we'll try to do one maybe towards the. End of June or the first part of July. Yeah, that'll give Val some time to get some postcards sent out, contact landowners and we'll get together.
Yeah.
So, how work for you, Jacob?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, but we. We don't have much on the plate, so we could get a report.
The problem. Okay, like I say, we've got one. We should need to look at the open ditch option. Okay. All right, Paul, how's it sound good to you?
That sounds great. I appreciate it.
Okay, well, we'll start working on our end and uh you'll probably see an invitation to a landowners meeting coming up here soon and. And we'll.
Sounds great.
Meet at the end of June or first part of July.
Sounds great. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good, thank you, Bert. Okay, so. Did we already did approve some? A work order on there? We did. Okay, so we'll leave that alone. Um. I guess we could just take action on having Boltman make. Look at that report. And uh you ready for a landowners meeting?
Do you want us to do an amendment for the open ditch option?
I guess I I wouldn't.
Part for open ditch on the bottom end already, brought up to the railroad tracks.
So yeah, we can easily.
And Paul did say it started to road under the railroad tracks. Okay, I said, let her go.
That'll that'll get there.
That'll wake them up.
Yeah, that'll get their attention. So. Alright, let's do that. Take a motion to um have Boltman make look at the DD eighteen Maine report again and uh. Look at that open ditch option for that. Okay.
I'll summon that.
All right, any other discussion on it? Hearing none, all favor I? Bye, pose? Yeah. Go to work on that, Jacob, and um. We'll give Val can stay in touch and we'll try to get something. Uh maybe next week we'll try to come up with a date. Of either like June twenty fourth or July. First. Somewhere in there for a landowners meeting. That works for you. Check check your schedule and let Val know. Okay. All right, thank you. Um DD two lat G.
What's that? Isaac Hovey.
Oh. Uh. Um.
You got just water coming up the intakes?
Yeah, that's what it says.
Blood solid hundred and five, there's two of them, one in the fence line and one over in the middle of the field there and then one on the north side. Just before you turn.
Yeah. Yeah. Hovey's right here, right?
Okay.
Yeah, Hovey's right. That's on either side.
And there's one right.
There's one there, one there, so like there's one here and one here. They're all boiling.
It's got to be restricted.
Yeah, that one there is right next to the interstate going.
It's restricted or it's restricted something.
Right.
So where does it go? Is it across the interstate?
It goes, it goes down into ditch down on two.
On two, oh, on the on the west side of the interstate.
Well, no, this goes down and. It's going to the south. East. And going into the ditch down there. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, cause it doesn't chew and that'll run the other side.
Yep, it crosses down, crosses look down below on this.
Yeah.
Try to be restricted.
But he didn't have anyone in mind to.
But as I recall, water comes up there all the time. It's been restricted for.
It's been a problem for a long.
You know, for a long time.
There's a bad picture. It comes from up north here, Tommy's house comes through here. And just keeps heading this way.
Down to the ditch.
It goes through.
Goes through sign, yeah.
Sign signs and.
I think I think the. Where it's coming up is on Nelson's.
Up in here.
Well, I'm not north.
And either.
If you're. There's an intake down there.
You want to you want to just take a peek and see if there's water sitting around those intakes you were talking about?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. If you just want to.
The other intake is between Hovey and Johnson. Right up next to the.
Um. So who? Is over that way?
Well, they're all somewhat, I mean, you know, you got. Ruggnus doing a lot already. Ruggnus is not far from here. I mean, we just uh.
How about Elliot?
A one.
He's still between Farman and I don't know what he's got for ditch work. I don't know if he's getting any ditches right now or not down south. His area was, I mean, you could do some research, maybe. I don't know. I've talked to him for a while.
Maybe he could be far enough, maybe.
Maybe Jeff, check with Nick, see if he's. Where he's at Farman.
He's still farming.
I guess I'd start.
Well, not today.
Right. I'd check with, maybe check with Nick and Elliot.
Might.
See what, see where they're at. And maybe even Ruggnus. If not, then just busy as it is, but right.
Well, it's Jeremy and Dad does the work too, so.
Yep.
Jerry does work.
Yep. You know, looking at that for us.
I have that extra pen up by your.
Home.
I ran out of.
Okay, so there are motion to approve the uh look into DD two lat G.
So.
I'll second that. Okay, any other discussion? All favor I?
Alright.
Bye. Both? Here.
Needs to stop her in.
This is gonna happen. Like, why all that? Issues with the tile. Hasn't been an issue for two, three years. I need to watch.
Well, I'm going to made that comment that. Last three years of drought, the roots have really suffered. It's blown out the tiles and there was actually guys that had to go out and dig up their tiles and put intakes in because the water was not getting to.
It's like.
Yeah, all your channels and stuff just. Sealed up and now we got issues. I mean, if it's boiling up, there's probably some long term and it's always been wet and then if even when it was dry, it was wet.
Yeah. All right, uh we've got some drainage claims and standpoints. Is there a motion to approve your drainage claims?
Yeah, I can second it.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Alright.
Bye, pose?
Majority of those are BMW spraying. They just have the.
And.
It looks like they came under and a lot of them, I think, so.
Yeah, I've seen some that they did. Some little bit bigger brush and it looks like it was down. Over that direction. I think it's actually Don't District. I noticed the other day.
I'll get my spreadsheet updated and send it out to you guys this time.
Okay.
All right, Val, really help for drainage.
I think that's it.
Good enough for today?
We got our joint meeting and. When am I about ten o'clock today?
Get that worked on. You got that covered for us?
And I sent you guys the link, so if you want to. YouTube banner phone in, so.
Yeah, you go to Esterville or Hemmetsburg, so maybe. Then a little bit out of the way, but figure out your deep, I might try to sneak down there.
Otherwise, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Jacob, thank you. Thanks, Jacob. All right, uh my regular claims. Was there any questions or comments on any of them? Yeah.
Second time.
Okay. All in favor I? Pose?
I'm making a motion to prove a payroll claim.
Yeah, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I? Pose? Send that one to. Okay. Uh reports?
Um.
Payroll eligibility.
First one I want.
Yep, there's a payroll change. For Katrina will be in effect. July first. The motion to approve or motion by Mark to approve the payroll change. Is there a second?
I'm second it.
Alright. Hearing none, all favor I? Both? I don't bet you sign up. Well, sorry. All right. I just moved it in mode.
Your deputy.
Want to do that? You know?
Yes.
Yeah, this is a. A motion would be to approve um. Katrina to appoint her as a deputy. Effective. July.
Bird's knowledge.
Yep.
Motion to acknowledge a new hire.
And she's original, she just moved to a deputy position. Yep. Yeah, so that's a motion.
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on it? Hearing none. Uh all favor I? Pose? Okay. Looks good. All right, so look at what I'm.
No.
No. Pilot, North Iowa Regional Housing Authority. Kind of our annual. Yep. Basically, we weave the uh.
They're weaving the taxes and.
Yep.
Are they getting a ten percent of their income less than utilities?
Yep. With their properties in Northwood and.
Manly.
Right, we're motion to approve the uh pilot with North Iowa Regional Housing Authority.
I'll make that a motion.
Yes, I think. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I? I oppose?
All right, motion carries. I should sign this one, right?
Yeah.
You'll fill out the rest?
Yep.
Hey.
Building in the ground. We figure out. Like when we have a storm and branches come down. I doubt very much that that was in chain dead to come back. He's gonna pick up the sticks and the garbage before we mow. Happen to pick up branches, right? We should have talked to Rich about that. If there was some way we could get. Like maybe conservation or secondary roads just come over and help.
I would sure think. It's just a matter of, you know, you could switch different creams, different days. First thing to do early on, come in and pick them up and then go do your other job.
It doesn't happen that often.
No, I hope not.
And it's saying, I'll take them.
Yeah, you just got to get them off of the street.
And we got a traffic here controlling the whole model and we don't say soon.
Right.
They used to, it doesn't make any difference.
And for now.
You're right.
For now, until we find a. Yeah, I mean, then it would be if we get a part time custodian, maybe. If all of that, unless the branches are too big, then we would still need some assistance.
If we, you know, that was one of the things we offered Brian a part time job and he didn't accept it. He decided to look for somebody, but. If that doesn't work out, we still got the option of getting a cleaning service.
Yeah.
To come in and take care of it and then get a whole Larsons to take care of the boiler.
That didn't work for windows. I didn't get one bid.
Well, I don't know. But I think you just have to hire them.
And I also think it's not, they're not seeing it. With the window cleaning services that they have in Mason City, I can't believe. That somebody wanted to put in a bid on that.
I had some.
I don't think they're. They're just not seeing it.
So I don't, you're either not seeing it or they just don't bid on projects. They just, you basically call them up and say, hey, what's his, come on, take a look at this. What's it going to take?
Yep.
Do I have to call people for quotes or something versus bid?
Seems that way, no.
Yeah, I.
I I don't know. That's just my thought, Jackie is, and you're right. How many? Need to fund the anchor, but how many people out of the company actually see the anchor?
How many people?
Every year go online and watch our online, you know, some of the people who do for drainage, I know people who watch that pretty regularly, but for. Something like this, they're not looking for on a daily basis.
And when we do projects with engineering firms, they send it out to the websites that we take care of.
Man, I don't know. Did you just send them a direct letter to like to pick two services and say, hey, we're interested in having. You guys do window service. What you think the cost would be to do?
Right. I would suppose, yeah.
I mean, is that qualify for? When I'm doing like an RFP?
We've got to get competitive votes.
I mean. As we get more than one.
Yep, and if we don't get one or we don't get two, we don't have a choice.
Yeah. But yeah, I think what I just. There's got to be window cleaning services in the Saravota area, a lot of them. We just. They, we haven't hit on the right door, right?
Yeah.
So I think we ought to look at that.
Cause they're in town.
Get in touch with them, maybe.
There's people in town already doing window services. I mean, they come to town to clean some.
Oh, yes.
Thing on Main Street.
Well, we. There's one in the county and then you know of another one in Saravota County that we could just.
Sign the letter to.
That's what I would do.
Just to request to come and take a look at us.
Yeah, we need to reach out a little better.
I'm sure it's an hourly or whatever, more likely.
No, look at it, just give us an idea what it costs, so.
And the next would be custodian. You want to put something in the paper and how the one thing I wanted to know is how many hours are you guys thinking? Are you thinking four or five hours a day or?
But you guys are more better at switching to what. You see what goes on in a daily basis, what do you think you need? I mean, I don't.
I would think we'd at least wanna go five hours and see how it works out.
Yep.
And see if they can get everything done that is supposed to be done. I, I, I don't know.
I, I think five would be a good starting spot.
You're on the committee.
Yeah.
I think five would be a good starting spot.
Right.
And so, but I, what I'm saying is I wouldn't be afraid if we can't find a, a good qualified candidate. We may wanna reach out for cleaning service.
Yeah.
Part-time's gonna be tough, I think.
Oh, I think part-time's gonna be a tough one to get.
Well, let's try that route first.
We'll try that route first and if it doesn't, you know, if it just doesn't look good. There's cleaning services out there.
Right.
And if, and they're gonna come in probably after hours.
Yeah, the cleaning service probably will.
Yeah, and see, that was one of the complaints that. I heard six, eight months ago here on that board was. Right here in the middle.
They wouldn't come in when there's people here.
That's right. John, do you know would be here.
Some of your biggest issues is keeping your restroom stocked.
Well, and that's what, that's what we had talked about on the committee, you know, a part-timer could do it, but you know, if they're away. At another facility, then, I mean, we can. I know our office tries to pick up a little bit of the slack, you know, a little bit because it's easy to change out the towels real quick, you know. Since this is a public building. And we gotta have that stuff available and there.
On Friday, I just did a little inventory and we're gonna have to order stuff again.
And they could keep track of that, too. They can make sure it's supplied for seven days under normal circumstances. There's always problems, but also they could check our supplies and say, hey, here's a list ordered.
There's gotta be plenty of businesses out there that actually do wire services.
Oh, hasn't just.
Individual push.
You know, and I don't. At the elevator over here, I know they have a part-timer.
Okay.
And you might wanna maybe call or I've been asked to at the elevator and then see if they wanna tack on.
Yeah.
I mean, I, but now I know she does, I wanna say it's a she, um, goes in on Sundays over there. But if we can get, I don't know if she has another job, but I, I can call, you want me to call Dave Quisling?
Yeah, it's his brain. Or, or, or just let him know that, uh, whoever's cleaning that there will be a part-time opportunity here.
I'll, I'll give a call.
Hey, they might be looking for a little more.
But. Yeah, if you make it, you know. She can kind of come and go, check supplies.
So, so.
Do the major cleaning after.
We'll talk to Rich on the outside with the sticks and. Should have brought that up, and he was here.
Yeah. Any else on the? Services?
I was just adding something to it.
Yeah.
I could go on in the right direction.
Yeah. Any water here off this window? Okay, still fun?
No.
We still gotta talk about the elevator? Yeah, I got, I did get a phone in, but it's, I was, I didn't put it in as like an emergency, just that. All that question, so I'm hoping.
It's been so long, we started April, first of April, what was the question?
It was on the, the computer board or whatever.
Be upgraded.
Well, I knew that and that's what the pricing was for, but what was the question we had for them? We wanted to ask them something.
Basically, if we can, is that?
We need that or no?
Well, do we need to do it or is it readily available so that we just run with this one until? It goes, can we? Or is that a, is that a two, three week downtime?
You know, when it's gonna go right there, I mean, the courtyard or something.
Yeah, we won't be able to get handicapped people up in the port upstairs, but I mean, we can do.
But that's not to say you stick that new board in there and it doesn't do the same.
And it was, another question was on the phone, is the phone need to be?
Digital.
Digital or, I mean, does it need to go?
And the phone issue, it's been two months and I forgot what the question was.
The phone issue would basically, if it goes out, we would just, the elevator would probably still operate, I would assume, I guess.
We just wouldn't be in.
Emergency mode.
Well, Dave wouldn't be happy with us that there isn't a way to call over the.
Yeah.
I, I would really not.
Well, I think for the upgrade. Of nineteen, you know, the twenty thousand, it's gonna be less than twenty thousand when we get our deductions on there and stuff. To get the right computer board in the elevator, so we can say, hey, we've done everything.
That is at the five year?
The, well, the bill is nineteen to. Ninety, and then you get fifteen hundred dollars off if you use a five-year. If you go with a ten-year contract, it's twenty-five, and then you also get. Uh, one month's free maintenance of seventy-three ninety-one, so. That's not that much, but the other fifteen hundred off of the twenty-five, and we have been doing five-year contracts.
Yeah.
Well, and our, and our maintenance has just been auto-renewing.
Yep, just re-triggers every five years, right?
I think so.
That's the way I read the email. But.
Yeah, we just wanna go. Wanna reach out to them and just do a five-year deal and just. Wait.
Be renewed technically.
But they would, they would.
Yeah.
They would start it over.
I just think we ought to do it, get it over with so we know it's working. Before, yeah, like you said, it'll, it'll be a trial and then that thing will shut down. And even if it does, is a trial and it does shut down and it is readily available, it's still gonna take a few days.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, to get them here. Right. Got it. Just gotta fix things.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wish you guys had a talk with the maintenance guy because he knows what he's doing.
Right.
And I'm not good at.
It's, we gotta have it, it's in the building, we can't not use it.
So, and we can't take a chance on it not. We have to do it, doing candid. Make it a. User-friendly for the public.
What emotion?
What's that?
What emotion?
I'll make a motion to upgrade. The uh, elevator with the new computer board.
I'll second.
Is that?
On a five-year deal. Is that what you'd like to do, still do a five and still a ten? I think you ought to go with a five. So.
So there's a motion a second on the elevator agreement. And we'll see when we just get that next week or whatever until. What's her name's probably gonna be.
You wanna see this one?
No, I already. All right, all in favor, I?
I.
I, close? Yeah. You want an email?
Sage?
Sage, that's her name. And let her know what sentence in agreement we can.
For the meeting instead of going over.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're fine.
He's just fine, well. In the margin.
All right. Okay, well, good there. Good. Jason, top of Iowa Waterman Extension Project. Resolution approving contract and.
On a quick update, we're two-thirds of the way there with our construction permit. You and I are signed off on the final engineering report, they signed off on the water main extension. Spoke to have approval this week on the well, well pump replacement, so we'll see you later. Jackie did share her overall budget where she was at with the ARP dollars. It's looking to me like we're gonna come in under the seven hundred thousand by quite a bit. So we did get a budget number for coating the inside of that small towers, you know. We don't have to pull the trigger on it now, but keep that in mind as we get closer to completion, get all the final numbers, there may be enough left over to take care of that as well. What was that called?
Forty.
Forty-two thousand, I think.
Forty-two is what I remember.
We got more than that by far. So we gotta figure out some other stuff.
Well, like I say, we'll see how this. You know, there's always.
There's always things going on. Yeah, even with that, I was coming in under, so.
Right, so we can. Look into that, cause I'm sure there may be some other, well. If we wanted to use some of that, we've obviously got more repairs of that wastewater plant.
Yes.
We've got a gearbox and motor.
We've got that radio deal.
Yeah, so we can, we can easily put that into it. Um.
We were out there with Friday.
Yeah, Jason.
There's some unknowns still on the water main where it's located or timed on too, so they're supposed to be trying to locate it. We, we drew it based off of records. And their locates didn't match our records, but I'm not sure that their locates were in the year, so they're trying to relocate it here again, so. Worst case scenario, it ends up under the driveway. Which means we have to replace pavement at a cost, but. I guess. That's where it is.
There's always.
Hook on, yeah. That's where. It's a good thing it came in a little bit. So, mechanics is anxious to get started. Um. He's had a couple of other projects slow down or fall through, so even as soon as this week, we get contacts and bond approved. We'd like to do the exploratory dig up at the water tower, verify what we're looking under there, that is based off of drawings as well from when that water tower was built. So. Then Wednesday, Thursday afternoon, we're gonna have a recon on site out there, just on site with utilities and contact to. Get it started on this project sooner than later, though it's looking, so. I do have contracts and bonds for mechanics, four-year performance payment, maintenance bond. Uh, so if there's any defect in one of the materials encountered or discovered within four years, they're required to fix that. Um, as far as contracted, especially if you have place contact, if it's a pipe or pound of fittings, um, et cetera, so. We do recommend a full contract and bond. Once we're near. We are so inclined. Near motion to approve the contract and bond?
Yeah, I need a.
Mechanist on the pipeline.
To approve a resolution twenty twenty-four dash two-nine, which is the contracted bond, what's in case estimating? Is that a motion?
That was a motion.
It's all right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing Ron, roll call over.
I.
So maybe.
I.
Stone.
Sure, we should do the. So after we get the permit for the while, so. Courts for replacing those. The other item I had was supplemental agreement for. Adding the construction services to the project, as far as engineering line, it was through final design bidding. We didn't have anything in the, um, in the agreement as far as fee-wise for the. Contract administration, so this is for not to exceed thirty-five thousand, that'll be for. For the admin, resident review, and then our construction statement as well, and our plan is. We're gonna GPS everything and if it goes as well, since it's kind of an. Interrogated, not a lot to measure off of here, and I've made sure we get it all surveyed in as they go. We don't have this. Issue in the future like we are right now.
Okay.
We'll make that motion to approve the supplemental agreement.
Yep. Yeah, is there a second?
I'll say that.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all favor, I?
I.
I, I, both?
Good, what's the theory? And I see you got your rate information laying out there.
Yeah, I'm ready for you.
I have not gotten a response back from, uh, she could keep that from holiday end. So go ahead and schedule a meeting with the group and give eighteen months.
Yeah, we gotta do something.
Yeah, I mean, we've been losing money almost.
Pick, pick a time. A duration eighteen months, within eighteen months, you're gonna have to start. And. Everybody agrees with that, that's what we'll put together and we'll present.
Yep, I would think so, uh, give them time, uh. Yeah. Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. I need to. I get two, there should be a third one for you.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah. To work off. Okay, we're just gonna have. We'll do that, so we're gonna. We already gave people. We're gonna coordinate the meeting out there, talk about the pressure changes and rate changes at the same time. Yep, that's the meeting Friday where people get questions on how this is gonna change. They were, they were. This is. Oh, I guess the other one, you need your records, yeah. The other one you need to sign is right, yeah. So. I didn't mean interruption, no. Then I put my rates back. Lot of, which? Who wants to come to the meeting, is that Sonia or do you want a group or?
I, it. Probably just wanna listen and make final decisions.
AJ's.
Probably balling.
The most.
AJ, I'm gonna shirt dry, I can't make any promises, I don't get there, but I'm sure.
Just let us know.
Um, I'll know more survey, what time you gonna do it?
But. I'm talking the rate meeting.
Oh, yeah, 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 oh, yeah, okay, so, yeah, yes, I will be there. That's two copies signing the agreement.
Yeah, last time we did it, we had one person.
Yeah, and that's usually what we've. Been doing, um, if it, I guess if it comes to more than that and we have to have a second meeting, then we may get the whole table and all, but.
That's good.
Well, I, I think.
Is water okay or do we need to raise that a little?
I think they're right, we were gonna raise that a little bit. To take care of coating this other tower, that's now we're gonna do.
But we probably still need a slight increase there. Regardless.
So, unless there's any other projects that we can book out that we need to start. And with the waste water treatment plant, it seems like every time we turn around. Yeah, something going on there, waste water, yeah. Yeah, I guess if we got, if we end up with the ARP ones. We need, and let's get these upgrades done.
Yep. Don't think so, would be good investment wise, so.
Yep.
It's infrastructure.
Yep.
All right, any other, Jason?
Thanks, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it. Okay, I wonder if that go.
See.
And she was.
She had something going.
She had something going on. Order waste water real good on that. Department head discussion. Everybody, anything?
We got, uh, Kel-Tec is supposed to be here this week, uh, with new computers in the cars. I got the computers on Friday. Uh, so I've got six of them ready to go in, I'll be finishing the rest of them here. So that, I just made sure we had some, so when they got here.
Do you have all fifteen?
Yes, I do. Yeah, they, uh, their guy drove them up on Friday.
The whole works.
Yeah, all.
Yeah. Yeah, let's get them in and get them on this yours.
Yeah.
Other department head?
Um, I will be on. Vacation for June. Eleventh that week. Yeah, the country. I'm not.
All right.
Oh, it might stop burning before I leave.
So you're back for seventeenth or eighteenth?
Uh, eighteen.
Then send out a email before, and if you would, please, just to remind everybody.
And I touch base, or you can. Provide some.
Right, other department heads? As you know. So very weekly, yes.
I had an email even. We approved three different plans, one of them was a working on disaster recovery plan that. Mark had an ESF fifteen and ESF ten plan, biggest discussion about. Uh, the, uh, we decided to go after a WCDA grant. For a new truck. We got forty-five thousand on this one, cause we wanna upgrade it from a fifteen hundred to a twenty-five hundred. Because of the triggers that were pulling around. And that kinda stuff, so we did. We did tell Mark to go ahead of that. And apply for a fall grant there, see if we can get something. Uh, that's all I had. The other question I got is. With Randy at recycling. We all got that little email, does he have the authority to pose a fine or not? I was just kinda wondering for my own.
Well, if you don't, you should.
Cause he's got, he's had a sign up there for years, when I go down there, it said if it's not marked, there's like the twenty-five dollar fine, and I was just wondering, after this little situation showed up. You know, that was one of the questions, I don't know.
Something that should be reviewed too, because I'm pretty positive unless you live in Worth County, you cannot dump garbage out there. Just because you're landowner, or even if you own an acreage, if you don't live on that acreage, you cannot dump garbage out.
And somebody could just go and ask Randy what the parameters are and.
There's gotta be, it's gotta be a paper somewhere to read them.
I just go, I'm going way back, I knew two people that used to watch them on site, oh, by me, one of them was my father, one was my landlord years ago, but they did not allow the people to dump. They did not live, cause there was. One farmer that owned a land in Worth County did not live here, and they told him he couldn't dump there, he didn't like it, he understood it. Cause, and truthfully, land doesn't produce any garbage, it's all acreages, actually, land should need to be paying property tax, so it's. Could be all acreages. That's what it was there for, that's what it was designed for, was recycling and getting rid of the garbage, so they have a rural pickup. And. Whether we need to review the policies out there, what, that's probably something we need.
We'd rather do. We sure would do. I'm just trying to avoid, yeah, having to run into this problem again.
And it's just random, it's not.
Oh, it does, yeah, what's? Once in five years, but it's still the idea, we need to know what's going on down there.
And the guy's selling acreage, so he won't leave bad.
Yeah.
I mean, I know. Third quarter, finally, they have a policy that they advertise on the radio, make sure you dark your loans, and I mean, I don't know who imposes the fines there, um.
They, they do right there, when you go, when you pay.
Yes. Yes.
You believe, or when you pay. When you pay. Twenty-five dollars on your.
Yeah.
On your bill, when you pay it there, but this is different, cause you don't.
Yeah, assuming.
You pay the property taxes, you don't pay a P at the counter.
It's not like Saro border county where you pay one of our scale.
Yeah, like I said, you pull in, there's no.
Like, I mean, I would pick.
You're talking landfill north of.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you don't have to be in Saro border, you.
That's, no, anybody can go there, but you're, you're gonna pay.
Except, except technically Worth County, rural residents are not a part of that.
No.
No.
The cities are. But the rural residents are not.
We don't. I go to Lake Mills, but see, my son that does construction, when he did work on my house. He couldn't take it to Lake Mills, I had to take a Lake Mills or else he put it in his and went to Mason's, I didn't pay for it. That was just the easier way to do it, so.
Yeah, the cities all are in agreement with. The landfill, that have been for years, just the rural area never was. And then we got our own recycling center, which that's where the garbage is supposed to go.
Right.
Yeah, otherwise it's supposed to go to Lake Mills.
Well, we should look at that to see. You know.
Yeah. I'll send an email to Randy after we're done, and just ask him if he's got policies and rules. He can get them to us.
Yep, so we can look at them, so we know what's going on.
Yep.
Cause I'd never thought about, you know, you always see the sign there, but you know, attention goes.
He's technically another one of your employees.
Right.
Yep, right. That was just a question I had.
I thought you think I would add into that, I know like with conservation. They cannot enforce any of their. Park fines, because nothing works for officers. We have to go and if they got a problem like that, we go and take care of that for them.
Yeah, and maybe, it might be the same thing here, I'm sure.
Well, this would be more of a civil thing, so I would definitely run it by Jeff to see what you wanna do.
Let's, yeah, let's look at the policies first, yeah, let's look at what you've got.
By Jeff and say, he, you know, oh, what can we do and what can't we?
I was just gonna work.
Yeah. So. Yeah.
So.
That it?
That was it for me.
Yeah. Word.
Oh, um, well, I had sent a lot of the advancement value. Fortunately, about two-thirds of the meeting was closed session, so I can't discuss that, but we did also go over, um. Next year's budget. So it's about a forty-seven million dollar budget, which is huge, which is not, which is not all detention, that's all the services there, and. Uh, we approved that, we approved the wages, with increases for next year, um. And, uh. Yes, I was suggested.
Yeah. It's a big budget.
It is.
Well, how many counties? Like twenty-seven?
We're over twenty now, we just actually, I think we approved two more that wanted to join. So yeah, it's only something about.
Wow. Good. Um, I didn't have anything other than I met with Jason out there, kind of through the water wastewater stuff, um. With those guys, so. Oh, yeah, I get to go to Emma's for today, so. Uh. Yep. Anything we need to add to the agenda for future?
It's more drainage.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do it here.
Yeah, I guess if not, nothing else, I take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion adjourn, I'm making a second.
Yeah, all favor eye. Eye, meetings adjourned, thanks, sir.